Will Stan say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, you'll note that you have an additional price quotation for item five B. And we were hoping for a price quotation on six D that did not come in. So you have additional information on five B and we will pull six D till our next meeting.
All righty, thank you. And with that, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Public input. Do we have any public input today? Okay, we will close public input and consent agenda. I noticed in the minutes for last month's meeting, it showed under the who is going to be at the manager's meeting as Dan Stacy, but it said September 30th, where it should have said August 30th. That's the only thing I noticed. Is there any other changes to the consent agenda? All righty, if I can get a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on to county employee recognition. For the highway department, we have Herb McCormick, Maintenance Superintendent in recognition of 25 years of service effective August 18th, 2022. Scott Pfeifer, Traffic Services Technician began the full-time position on September 6th, 2022. Sheriff's Department, we have Holly Malm, Jail Program Coordinator is recognized for 15 years of service effective August 28th, 2022. Chad Olson, Investigator is recognized for 20 years of service effective September 3rd, 2022. And in social services, we have Geraldine or Dean Swart, Social Worker, Child Services is recognized for 12-plus years of service from October 12th, 2009 to September 9th, 2022. And Caitlin Dudley, Family-Based Service Provider began the full-time position on August 17th, 2022.
Do you want to present Dean for...
Oh. Dean, we have a... This is a service award that the county would like to give to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Nevis don't get it.
Mr. Chair, can I just say a couple things quick?
Sure. Just, I just want to recognize Dean. Since I've been here for, what, two and a half, almost three years now, she's been an inspiration to other staff that have been there and to me. I've really enjoyed working with her and very, very sad to see her go. And again, I just can't say enough how good of an employee she's been.
Thank you, Brian. And one last thing, I was given this at the manager's meeting. I kind of had a couple options of where I could put it, but since it's kind of in recognition of employees, it's from the Minnesota Board of Peace Officers Standards and Training. It says, Dear Mr. Cadwell, the Minnesota Board of Peace Officers Standard and Training Board is the occupational regulatory agency charged with a vital responsibility of maintaining selection, education, and licensing standards for the 415 Minnesota law enforcement agencies that employ over 10,500 peace officers across our state. While the post board performs many functions, a significant portion of the post's responsibility is dedicated to conducting compliance reviews of Minnesota law enforcement agencies to ensure they are meeting legislatively mandated training and departmental policies on use of force firearms training, emergency vehicle operation, and pursuit driving training and mandated departmental policies. On October 18th, 2022, a post board standards coordinator conducted a review at the Hubbard County Sheriff's Office. After a comprehensive review of their records concerning mandated employees' training and department policies, I am pleased to inform you that your agency passed the review. Ensuring all law enforcement agencies around the state are in compliance plays a pivotal role in maintaining the high level of professionalism we have enjoyed in Minnesota for many years, and that professionalism translates into quality law enforcement services for the citizens of Minnesota. Please take a moment to recognize your police department for this important accomplishment. Sincerely, Eric Misslett, Executive Director. So I just want to thank also Cory on this because of course Cory being the sheriff, he's, it's important that, I know for Cory that they meet the training, and I feel the same way whether it's in my own profession or anything. Education and training is important to do all of our jobs. So I appreciate Cory and his officers for the work that they do. All righty, next.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say, I think the rest of the board echoes your...
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
So Caitlin Dudley is here. She was with the client, she ran right over, so I would just like to interview Caitlin Dudley.
Oh, thank you, Caitlin. So she made the effort to come over, thank you, Brian. Highway and Survey.
Good morning. Couple things in our agenda today. The first is review and approve the quote for the county highway maps. This is, I brought it up at the last meeting and went out and got a quote, and we didn't just get one sole quote from the same company that we had purchased from before, they've got our file, so it's an easy reprint for them, much easier than setting it up with somebody else to have it printed. So 3,000 maps is what we ordered last time, so that's what I got a quote for this time. And the amount of the quote is $2,835.06, which includes the shipping. And so be my recommendation to go with them, and then if we could maybe discuss the pricing on the maps, if we want to leave that ad free to the public, or if there's a charge needed, but I think at this point we're fine and it's, they go flying out the door, so I know the public likes them.
All righty.
I'll make that motion.
All righty.
Are you going to include they're going to be free, or do you want to discuss that later? Okay, I'll second.
Thank you, Sharon.
I agree, Dan.
All righty, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All righty.
All right, second on the agenda is review and approve a quote for a Civil 3D Design Software seat. This is for the new employee that we added this year, and it's our, it's our main software that we use to design our projects. And wasn't that long ago, was it January? We got a quote on six seats. We do four of the full seats and then two of the light for Jeff and I to use. And so what this would be for is, what was in your original agenda was to do a three-year contract on that seat, but we don't, we want to line this up with our existing ones, and so Jeff did get a prorated quote, which is that new one that you should have had handed out. And so this will, this will put that new employee to the end of the three-year quote on the other one, so then we'd be renewing five full seats with two lights at that point. And so this is a government service contract, and so it is the, they are the sole provider for this area, there's nobody else to go to, we've tried in the past, and it always comes back to this DLT solution. So I would recommend going with DLT solutions, $5,718.46, and that's for two, two-plus years of that seat.
All righty. Thank you, Tom.
I can second.
Thank you, Sharon. Yeah, thank you for that updated form here. I see the original one is $7,098.78 for a three-year subscriptions.
Yeah.
All righty, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
Want to give a quick project update? You ready?
Sure, sure. Our two remaining contracts that are open are County State Highway 16 project with Knife River Materials from Highway 71 to the Cass County Line is essentially complete. There's some minor cleanup items, and they're going to do some diamond grinding out there and a couple little bumps and rough areas, and then, like I said, some minor cleanup beyond that. Then after that, the project will be essentially complete. And then, starting next Monday, the 12th of September, Knife River Materials again is going to be getting work on our County Road 119 project with grading, and that'll be followed up by pavement reclamation and resurfacing and paving that new section that will be graded, as well as with County Road 82, past the Nevis shop, down to County Road 33 will be a mill and resurfacing, and then there's two township projects that were tied onto that with Todd Township and Nevis Township and 174th Street, so.
Will that all get done this fall?
Sure. Well, that's, that's intent, but we'll see what Mother Nature delivers, so.
Sure.
We are waiting, we have one bid letting. Do you recall the date on that? 23rd? Does that sound right?
13th.
Or 13th, next week, okay. So this is for that, the Nevis Township Bridge going out to the island on Beltane. This is an interesting project for us. I think I'd mentioned before that it's such a delay on getting box culverts, so the ads are out, the ad is out for the bids, and construction is not until after Labor Day of '23 with final completion in 2024 with the paving. So that, it's going to be interesting to see how bids come in, that's a long time to hold a contractor on the hook for pricing, so hopefully it's not too out of line with what the pricing is doing now. But that, that's probably going to be our last letting of the year, and everything else will be pushed to probably a December, January letting for like the local road improvement projects that we've got out with the Arago Township, Henrietta Township, and the City of Park Rapids, so.
And what does happen in this instance where, say, things go crazier than they already are with prices and that, for this contractor then? Does he try to find ways, or does he...
Well, with some of it, you know, they can put the box culvert on order, so that's not a problem. The biggest thing is going to be probably, you know, some of the more volatile pricing like the fuels, you don't know what it's going to do with pavement at the time when that's two years out. But yeah, the major part of that would be the box culvert, so not a, not a huge concern, it's just that all the construction prices are up currently, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Trail 171, that's waiting on a box culvert.
Same thing, yep.
And that price keeps going up, and it's, you know, the, the allowance from the state was $2 million, and I'm kind of worried if that's going to go over.
Yep, it eats into it quick.
Yeah.
So when, when the contractors bid, is there a clause in there that if, you know, the price increase is over 10% or whatever, it can be an adjustment, or do they just bid and that's it?
They bid, you know, and so we, on that one, we have the contract dates in the proposal, so they know full well going into it that those are the times that they're looking at. Yeah, and so your bid price is your bid price, you gotta, gotta hold good on that. Now, if there's delays beyond anybody's vision, I guess, that would be a little bit different. We would, we would address that then probably through a change order, but you know, it's got to be justified, so it's...
So Prime West Health this year has a really healthy profit and loss for various reasons, and the state's looking at taking some of the money back. So let's say prices went down and so they're making a huge profit on this, we're just all, we just pay whatever the bid we accept, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's, so we do, we do a bid bond, and then we do a payment and performance bond too. And so if one side or the other, and it typically wouldn't be us that would come in and say, you know, we're not going to do the project, we should do that before you award a project. But if the contractor comes in and says, I can't do it anymore, they're still on the hook for their bond.
Okay.
You know, we've never run into that situation of having to exercise that, which is a good thing, but you know, there is, there is ways that if it got too far out of whack and the contractor just said, I, we can't do it, we're going to lose money on this, we just can't do it. There are outs, but it would have to be pretty drastic.
Okay, thank you.
And then how many people, you know, have homes and cabins on that island that'll be affected by this?
You know, there's probably, what, 15?
15.
15 residences, they're not all year round, but there are, there are maybe a handful of year-round residents. The plan is to do like a phased construction half at a time on it. I know Jeff has received one call of, of concerns with that, because there, there's this pretty significant grade raise through there, so you're, you're doing half at a time where maybe the level of your road is going up this high with a drop-off that's just going to be kind of guarded with a jersey barrier, a concrete barrier. It's interesting, you know, maybe there's some other options there of, you know, housing them for, for a week or two somewhere else, but we kind of leave that up to the contractors to figure out how their, how their phased construction is going to work. It, it's drawn up as that the road is going to remain open.
Okay. Park on the shore and get a boat ride to their house?
It'd be an option, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right. Solid waste.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so I have a couple items this morning related to the fire that we had at the transfer station and, and getting some of the cleanup work and repair work completed. So the first item I have is to review and approve quotes for cleaning the south transfer station. So for this work, we're looking at cleaning the inside of the building, and it'd be the commercial side of the building that had the fire back in June. We received two quotes from this company working through MCIT, and they'll be going through and doing kind of a, I think it's a double, double pass of the inside of the building to make sure all the smoke and residue and everything's off the walls, cleaning the conduit and everything that was kind of exposed to the fire, as well as cleaning the equipment that was inside the building. The low quote we'd received for that work was from Servpro Disaster Recovery Team out of Brainerd-Dynah area for $107,330.28. And again, this work has been reviewed and authorized by MCIT, and with all these quotes, MCIT withholds a little bit of retainage until the work is complete. And once, once the work is complete, we submit receipts, we get the remainder of the funds, so all this is being done really with a $1,000 deductible from the county for that claims, all the claims, so.
All righty. Thank you, Sharon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, so the second one I have is to review and approve quote for electrical, electrical work at the south transfer station. We received two quotes, quotes for this work with the low quote being Burke Strom Electric out of Park Rapids for $11,975. And this is to replace four air pier fans that are up above, up in the ceiling that were exposed to the fire, and then also replace some CO and O2 detectors in the building. And I would recommend the low quote for this.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
And then we'll have one more, that six D that was removed from the agenda, didn't get a second quote on that yet, so that'll be coming back at the next board meeting, and that should kind of wrap up the, our cleanup work as a result of the fire, so. The next agenda item I have, six C is review and approve quotes for LED light replacements. So our old transfer station building at the south site there, we have approximately half of our overhead lights are not working in that building, so provided us an opportunity to upgrade to LED lights, to replace them. We're going to continue to utilize this building for storage and then plan to use part of this building for hopefully a reuse area in the future. Three quotes received for this project with the low quote being from Avance and Electric out of Park Rapids, $2,986.70. And again, this would replace 10, 10 of those High Bay lights with LED lights.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sharon. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I had on my agenda. I will update you on that we are, our Green Corps member, they were able to hire someone on the state level, and they're supposed to be starting, I think, on September 19th will be their first day, so we'll have, you know, a bunch of projects related to education and outreach, and hopefully doing some expansion of our reuse and, and some other things coming, coming from that position that we look forward to, so.
Is that for a year?
Uh, yeah, I think it's 11 months, so, be through, I think through August, so.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, thank you.
Environmental Services.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
Got two items for the board this morning. The first is a final plat application. And this one is Ferris Acres, it's by Son and Linda Tran, it's up in Farden Township, near to the town hall. They're creating, I believe, seven lots, 34 acres, give or take, and this was before the board for preliminary approval on July 19th of this year. They didn't have any conditions placed on that approval. The Planning Commission recommended final approval at the August meeting, and they didn't recommend any conditions either due to the fact that it's a pretty straightforward plat, all the road, or excuse me, all the lots front existing public roads, and it's kind of a, about as easy a plat as one could hope for, so Planning Commission recommends final approval, and that's what's before the board today for action.
Thank you. And just what you said, it seemed pretty cut and dried, and then the Planning Commission approved, so should be easy, hopefully. All righty, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Second item for the board is the agreement that we have with the state through the Board of Water and Soil Resources for our septic program administration grant through the Natural Resources Block Grant. There's two items, or two components to the agreement. The first would be base funding that we receive annually for administering our septic program, and that amount is $18,600. And then we also applied for and were awarded funds for doing again what we have done several times in years past, which is offer a grant program for low-income households for providing financial assistance to upgrade failing septic systems. So we got $30,000, excuse me, $33,000 and change that we would be able to offer through that grant program again in the next year, so.
I'll go ahead.
What's the threshold for a family of four?
It's based on USDA parameters for what is a low-income household, and those are county-specific, so I haven't looked at the numbers yet for what they will be next year, but there's differing numbers based on the number of people in the household, and so that's the general parameter that we use on determining qualification.
Are they posted on the website? I mean, can they find that, a family of four, one income coming in?
Once we get the application form updated, we have that information on there, so when people look at the application, they can determine if they would qualify.
Thank you, Eric.
Sure.
So I know some years you've said people haven't used the funds, does it just sit in a designated account then, or do you have to give it back?
We'd give it back, so the money would initially be transferred to the county, and then at the end of the grant period, if we haven't expended all the funds, we can request an extension to see if it's just, we need a little more time to get that out, and then if, for whatever reason, we can't spend all of the money, then yes, it would need to be returned, whatever's left to the state. But thankfully, we've always been able to find enough places to award them the money, so we haven't had to return any to the state.
So the HRA is looking, they're trying to find money for owner-occupied rehab, so this would be a good connection for Mary to contact you, to let people know that apply for, for that need, because it's also income-based, that they would have that option to apply through your office. Okay, I'll pass it on to her.
Yeah, they just need to provide their two most recent federal tax returns to show income qualification and then a failing compliance inspection report.
Okay.
Yeah, and I see here it says that you've helped 16 landowners upgrade their septic systems between 2013 and 2020, so it's...
Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah, it has been a huge help for some of those folks, that they wouldn't have had any other means by which to get their system fixed otherwise.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then one last item is just an informational item for the board, and that concerns a shoreline management ordinance enforcement matter. It's one that I've visited with Jeff, as well as Jonathan and our Land Use Council on, and it's a property where there's been a consistent pattern of chronic violations with the property owner knowing what the regulations are and violating them anyway. And we had a rather significant item that came to light recently where something was approved to be a certain type of structure and approved to be constructed in a manner that was used for occupation when it wasn't meant to be. So that item, we're asking for, I guess, just in talking with Jeff, we just wanted to let the board know that that one is something that we're going to be taking enforcement action on through the assistance of our Land Use Council. And if the board wanted to go into further details as to the specifics on that one, council was recommended that we would do a closed session at the next meeting, otherwise. I just wanted to make the board aware that we do have a matter that warrants more specific outside assistance.
And I assume you, you've always filled in the commissioners if there's an issue in their district, so I'm assuming you've done that with this person?
I haven't had an opportunity, just due to the timing of things, but I will certainly make work of that.
Thank you.
That's all that I had for the board.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Next, we've got Finance.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Administrator.
I have one item and that is to move our outsourcer for the tax statements, proposed notices and valuation notices, to a new vendor, we were notified a couple of months ago from Streamworks, which is who we, who we used, for the twenty twenty-two statements and the proposed statements, they were a new vendor. And it was, there were, there were a lot of challenges, not just with Hubbard County, but, I think every other county that had Tyler software, in fact, Streamworks sent us an email this year saying that they were discontinuing services to all counties, which, which forced us to, you know, look again for a new vendor. So the, the bids that we received are very difficult to look at because they, they piece, they charge us for the green envelopes in the statements. The administration, the processing, I mean, it's just every little thing, so, I don't have confidence in the amount for the tax and value statements, I think from Master's Touch, it could be high and I think Prima Data, whom I'd never heard from before, they're in Wisconsin and, and Master's Touch isn't local either, they're throughout the whole United States. And I, and anyway, I think Prima Data could be low because it was just hard to match apples to apples with the quotes. And then if you look on the TNT, then Master's Touch is low and Prima Data is high. The deciding factor with this is that we would like to go with Master's Touch because, Beltrami County is using Master's Touch, they use them for their twenty-two's tax statements and they said that it went very smoothly. That everything was very timely, this, this year it was, our statements, the notices went out late, you may recall the assessors department having to reschedule their first CB, Board of, Board of Appeal Township meetings. And so just with what Master's Touch has, or excuse me, Beltrami has spoken of Master's Touch, we would like to go with them. We've heard that the counties that have Tyler and have used them have had a lot of success, mainly Beltrami County. So I'm recommending Master's Touch, although it looks to be quite high on the tax and value statement. But, but again, I, I don't know that that's accurate.
However, Kay, in your notes, you said that, that company that we used in the prior year were even higher. At fifteen thousand, forty-four dollars? Or did I just?
That was, that was with Streamworks, yeah, that was even higher.
So Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve Master's Touch, even though the quote is higher on one, because Beltrami County has already found them to be satisfactory to work with.
Thank you.
Does that fit within the statutes where it says responsible vendor?
Well, ye- yes, and I, you know, again, I would, I have had a lot of communications with Leah Olvis, who's in charge of tax for Beltrami. We've had many of the same challenges with the new conversion and the success they had really spoke highly of Master's Touch.
Because statute says lowest responsible vendor, so that gives us flexibility there.
Yes, yes, and I would, I would say if, you know, the TNTs and the twenty-three tax statements were, let's just say a disaster, if I could use that word loosely, that's, what we would probably sum up the twenty-two tax statements, they, you know, going out late, that's, that's not good. And, and they have to be out by the end of March and they were not. So if that happened again, I think we would continue looking until we find a vendor that we have faith in and can count on. Right now, the closest vendor appears to be Master's Touch that would meet our needs.
The, the statute, the amount of the purchase under twenty-five thousand dollars, doesn't really qualify for that, we're not really beholden to that, but Kay's description of having high confidence in one group versus the other, and not having high confidence in that the bids are apples to apples, give you the ability to kind of take her recommendation on that.
I felt the same way looking through the, the bids, they were confusing.
Yeah, very, I had requested, a, a second bid, just saying, what is your basic without postage, you know, what's your estimate, trying to get apples to apples and I still couldn't get there.
And you, you comment here about Master's Touch being familiar with the Tyler software, do you know anything about that with Prima Data?
No. No, the same, what we used to go through, Amer- American Business Systems. He, he would get the forms and provide them, provide our forms, our statements to the outsourcer. And, and so he was kind of a middleman, he's, he recommended Streamworks and now he's recommended Prima Data, so he went out and kind of, did some digging and, well, here's, here's another vendor that provides this, where I can provide the forms and, so he's, he's provided this Prima Data to many other counties, I don't know who they've gone with. I just know that Beltrami had a lot of success with Master's Touch and we would, I think they would provide the forms and maybe that's the large difference between the eleven thousand and the six thousand between Prima Data. I did not talk with Prima Data, just based on what Leah's told me with Master's Touch.
Plus it said in your notes that Master's Touch works well with Tyler.
And that's, that's the main reason.
Yeah, that's huge.
And, and Leah from Beltrami had said she had a lot of success with Master's Touch, moving to Tyler, they, it went quite smoothly.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Administrator's report, administrator's report.
Mr. Chair, I would probably take the sheriff's budget presentation ahead of time, I don't have any actual, comments for administrator report today, but there might be some summary budget items after we have this conversation.
Alrighty. Sheriff's Department, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
And you'll note that Denise put, put the page numbers of thirty-two to fifty for, for two hundred fund, or the two hundred department budgets.
Do you want me to make this easy for you guys? While I look through this? Why don't you give me the list of, as you're talking, what your priorities are?
Well, here's what I'll say, you know, a large part of our increase is due to a couple of major projects that we have, which are very, high priority, which would be the radio replacement project and then our records management system project, which is our computer system. Both are as high priority as, as we have, they truly are, the radio project simply, they, our current radios, I believe, are eleven years old, which, you know, for a lot of radios may not seem that bad, but I will tell you this, you know, they're old enough to where Motorola no longer uses those models, they do not support them, which means they do not repair them. So if we have a radio that goes down in a squad car or one of our portables, they don't, they don't get fixed. So that is a, a major thing for us. So as far as a priority wise, you know, that is a high priority for us to get those replaced.
That was the four hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Three fifty, I think, is what we settled on.
Okay.
So, and as you know, you know, we did have, I think it was ARPA money, ARPA funds that, you know, would have taken care of that, but that money got redirected, so therefore got added to our budget, so there's a, you know, over a third of a million dollars increase that, that hit us. The other one is our records management system, which I believe was, was it three fifty or three hundred total project?
Three hundred total.
Three hundred thousand dollar total project, we did budget some of those monies, you know, for next year's budget, but that as well is a major priority for us. As you know, another big increase, wages, I believe they went up roughly three hundred and sixty thousand, which simply is out of my control. That is, you know, another one of those things, but, you know, those three projects alone add up to a lot of money, which, you know, takes up the bulk of our, increase, you know, in our budget. I only asked for one additional staff, which, when you look at the three part-time positions we eliminated, it's a financial wash, it breaks even. So the additional, you know, sergeant would be a day shift sergeant, it would give us a supervisor on at all, all times, which in our mind is very important. It's going to save on some overtime and it's going to keep us from having to cover, you know, some shifts with this person as well, plus again, on weekends when we don't have a supervisor on during the day, it, it fills that void. So on a liability, you know, aspect of this, that's a very important thing. But again, as far as the budget goes, that's a wash, so we don't even see an increase because of that person, because we're eliminating, three part-time positions that were budgeted for.
So the three part-time that were eliminated, but the benefits would be over and above, right? You're talking salary, but not benefits? Would that be correct? Do you see what I'm asking?
Yes, I think.
I think that the three part-time would cover the total package.
We've, we've made adjustments and I'll, and I'll, I'm going to, I'm going to pull this up so you can see it and this is, so we, we've split out general fund from public safety and, and you can, you can see that we've, we've identified using four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of, of Enbridge captured money to offset the, the, the items that Cory and Scott talked about relative to the radios and the software. So in the, the balance of the dollar increase, the requested dollar increase, the one point one five million dollars in levy, comes primarily from two sources, as Cory mentioned, the increase in wages, which we're projecting three percent in here, everybody's seeing that same number. But the biggest, the biggest change is the operating parameters at the jail. We, with the increased occupancy in March, we added four additional staff, we haven't, those aren't showing in the twenty twenty-two budget, so when you show twenty-three against twenty-two, that looks like a big increase. And we've also.
I have a question, so, so we have to make up that money that we're currently paying for those people, so where is, where is that dollar coming from? Because it wasn't in the budget for twenty-two.
Yes, and, and, and truthfully, we're going to have to do some analysis and look at that, right now, it looks to me like we're going to be a six or seven hundred thousand dollar operational deficit in, in the two hundreds, because of the change in operations at the jail.
And so where will that money come from?
Fund balance, if it doesn't come from, from other short uses, if we, if we don't have additional, some of it's going to come from fund balance, I don't know how much yet.
Okay, thank you.
The other big piece of that is with the increased occupancy of the jail, we're not able to rent out spaces, right? So we're, we're not only are we seeing an, an overage of expenses of four hundred thousand dollars, we're seeing an underage in revenue of probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. So we have to pay for that this year and then we have to budget for it next year, which, which comes up to this, this new, this new set, instead of, needing six million dollars to operate, of levy to operate the sheriff's office in the jail, we need seven point one. Now, one of the things that I wanted Scott and Cory to talk about, and Scott got this to me last week, is to talk a little bit about the assumptions of the coverage, right? So with the jail operations and the dispatch that we have, the number of staff that we need to have on all the time, you know, two twelve hour shifts, is pretty much set. And then the other conversation that we have relative to public safety is the number of deputies that we have on during the day, that we have on overnight, that we have on weekends. Because we can't, we can't just say, we'll change that number, because changing that number just puts us in an operational deficit next year. We have to have a conversation about the, the service expectations and the staffing levels for that. The fourth comment, or fourth element of the budget is the administrative overhead that it takes to operate, those, all of those facilities in combined, right? So all of our dispatcher jailers are assigned to shifts to cover the dispatch board. But we have a dispatch supervisor who has some responsibilities that are not specifically dispatch. We have a jail administrator, an assistant jail administrator, who are not necessarily the people that are jailing, cover as needed, right, et cetera, but they have administrative things, so. I don't know if, Scott, you want to review some of the expectations that you shared with me about, you know, daytime we have X number deputies on, nighttime we have X number, talk about the road miles that we cover. I don't think those assumptions have changed from twenty-two to twenty-three. Cory's absolutely right, by budgeting for the day sergeant, we are adding some administrative expense, but we did back out enough, part-time to cover not only the wages, but the benefits package for, for this additional person, so, net impact of that adjustment is none. It just provides more flexibility in the, the way that they operate that system, but, the biggest conversation is, is the way we've been operating and the fact that the jail is operating near, you know, eighty percent capacity or almost full capacity, means it costs that much more to operate, you know, it could be six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. And the other four hundred thousand dollars is, is the three percent budgeted increase in wages.
Obviously, as you all know, public safety, there's a cost to that, it, it, it simply is and, the more people that are being held accountable, which means they're being, you know, in our jail longer, which means our population is going up, there's, there's a cost with that as well. You know, but as far as public safety wise goes, you know, the public is, is better off, there's a reason they're in jail, put it that way, there simply is. And, you know, the, the type of people that are getting arrested are, you know, maybe it's some that are on probation that are going to be held longer, there's people that are, you know, felons that are going to be held longer. It's just, there's a cost to all of that. You know, when we had thirty of our own inmates and forty of somebody else's inmates, you know, that was a, financially, that was a great thing, but, now it's, you know, the roles are reversed and, you know, these are basically all of our inmates. But it means, you know, the deputies are working hard, they're holding people accountable and yes, there's a cost to that, but, but what is the cost if you don't do that? You got more fatalities, you know, on the highway. So I don't see that going away, you know, anytime soon as far as our own jail population going down, but what does that bring? It, it brings an additional cost. And, you know, somebody has to pay for that, you know, obviously, and, and that's one of those things though, that, you know, wages obviously are out of my hands, but this is a, whether you want to call it a trend, or however we want to word it, it's, it's here and I think it's here to stay. I can't, you know, you look at staffing, for example, I can't have less jailers, you know, working every shift because you simply can't do it when you have that many people, in the jail, the Department of Corrections mandates, you know, minimum number of staffing levels that you have. One area that we increased a few years ago and it's, it's gradually gotten more and more because we've gotten busier, is having a second dispatch on. Well, there's a cost to that, but it's needed, you know, one dispatcher simply cannot handle when you get emergency situations that come in and you have to dispatch your deputies, you have to dispatch ambulances, you have to dispatch fire departments with their jaws of life, first responders, I mean, you name it. It's just way too busy in this day and age. And I can't apologize for that, it's just, it's just the way it is, you know, these days, or when you look at the number of incidents that we, get called in ever since I was elected, you know, for the past twelve years, they just steadily go up and up and up. And Hubbard County is, is a busy county, you know, we truly are and, it's, it's one of those things where it's simply, you know, not going away and, and to, you know, to, to adjust the number of deputies that we have on, you know, for savings, simply means that the citizens would have to wait longer for a deputy to respond, the investigations wouldn't get done in a timely. Um, the investigations wouldn't get done in a timely manner. I promise you that, that we're not fat as far as how many people that we have on. We've never done that. We're, we're not asking to do that. It's simply because we need the number of people that we have on.
So, Cory, I talked to someone yesterday, not in this county. This happened in a different county. But you brought up nine eleven, so does every nine eleven call get answered by a person? Because they called nine eleven twice in their county and the ambulance never showed up. So, do you have an option to do, uh, like, a auto thing, or do you guys answer every call personally?
No, we answer every call personally. There is a text to nine-one-one option that people can do. It happens very seldom. Historically, we've used, we've contracted with Beltrami County to receive those, that type of a nine-one-one call. Going forward, we're gonna be doing it, you know, ourselves, you know, with our own equipment. But no, if you dial up nine-one-one, it goes direct to that, um, to a dispatch center, and they speak to you in person. So, um, I, I can't account for whoever it was. Sometimes things happen, unfortunately. Um, but no, that's, that standard procedure is that it gets answered by a, a live person, absolutely.
How does that work with someone on a cell phone, dialing nine-one-one? Does that?
It goes to the nearest, um, dispatch center from where, whatever tower it's bouncing off of. So, there are times in, you know, northern Hubbard County, you know, way up north, where you might dial nine-one-one and it'll go into Beltrami, you know, which isn't a major deal because they can transfer it to us. It's not a major deal, but that's how the cellphone thing works with the nine-one-one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So then I have one more question that I know you won't even wanna answer. But because I like projects and so I wanna get my projects done.
Yep.
But is it feasible to do half of one of your projects? Can you, can you do a half a project and do the rest next year, or is this an all or nothing?
No, here's what we can do, and we've had some discussion on this. Um, let's take the radio project, for example. The, the records management system, we can't. That has to be.
So, that's all or nothing?
That has to be an all or nothing thing. The radios, yes, we, we could, you know, purchase, let's just say, half the radios, um, starting, you know, in twenty-three and then factor in the, the other half the following year. We could try to, um, do something like that, whether we concentrate on the, the radios for the squad or the portables. However, we figure it out, or half and half, we could manage something like that.
Okay, thank you.
One other note on the, the software RMS project, um, a lot of that is coming from restricted funds, so there's not a lot of levy dollars that are going towards that project as well.
Thank you, Scott.
Are you good with splitting the radio project up?
Yeah.
And it's not a large dollar amount. I'm just, I'm looking for any penny I can.
And, and truthfully, the, the, the radio project and the software project, if we capture the Enbridge capacity, they don't have any impact on the levy next year.
Okay, thank you.
So, the only flexibility, the only reason to defer that would be if we have some other priority of the use of those or the board changes their policy relative to how much of that capacity they want to collect.
Okay.
And I, I will have, I hope to have, um, tax impacts for our work session next week so that you can evaluate that policy. So, right now, what we're asking for is a ten percent operating increase primarily for law enforcement and social services. And ten, and ten percent to capture the, the one point six million dollars to use for future use in next year and subsequent years from the Enbridge new tax capacity.
Can you, can you put up that, uh, sheet you had up?
Yep.
Okay, I was looking, I just wanted, okay, what is the fund balance of public safety?
Fund balance, public safety doesn't have a fund balance.
Does that go in with the general?
When I'm sho-, yes. Um, when I'm showing the use of fund balance, you see right here, this, this number one point six is the proposed levy to capture that tax capacity. We're showing it over here in, in expenses and just to balance the budget. Um, but the use of it is shown here as five fifty in general, and that's against, um, a couple of major projects we identified and discussed, and then here in public safety. So, that doesn't come from the levy.
Right.
This dollar increase on the levy right here, um, and this is, this is changed, but we're, we're showing a seven, seven percent increase off of our sixteen million dollar levy. This one point one five, that's what that is. And, um, social services is four and a half to five percent, depending on where we settle on that.
And is, is for social services, part of that is because we didn't, the, you're actually figuring out the budget?
We're, we're actually balancing the budget. Um, we're, we're paying for the fact that we haven't raised the levy for that for the last four years. And that's still showing the, the net three new positions. And I, I, I can talk more about that later if you have questions about that.
I'm just trying to.
Yep, but that's, Cory and Scott are not wrong. This is how the math works out. We're gonna overspend by that seven hundred thousand dollars this year. We have to budget for that next year, and that seven hundred thousand dollars is gonna cost us a million because of the, of the co-, of the increase in the cost of labor.
Thank you.
So, obviously, we're in a good position as far as, you know, say, the taxpayers and the levy dollars not having to fund this. But again, as far as the, the radio replacement goes, if, if you need part of that money, I'm certainly, obviously, we can do it in, in two steps, two stages.
This has been really informational, so thank you.
Okay.
And then, um, so you wanna add a sergeant? How many sergeants do you currently have?
We have two sergeants on at night, one during the day.
Okay.
And so that does leave a void during the day when, for the lack of a supervisor, especially weekends, um, 'cause that, the current sergeant obviously doesn't work seven days a week, you know, they're on a, he's on a rotation, gets days off as well.
Sure.
So, this would fill that void.
Okay. We always, currently at night, we have one on every night.
Yes.
We don't have two on at a time. We have one on. Obviously, they, when one's not working, the other's off.
Sure.
Um, and then they split the weekends. And then during the day, we just have the one-day sergeant position, so we would, we're looking for a second one to work opposite of that. So, we would have then, um, full-time supervisory coverage, um, on all weekends, um, and all days.
And our sergeants, they don't just serve as a supervisory role. They are an active patrol deputy as well, where they're taking calls, um, as well. So, it's not, they don't just sit, you know, behind a desk. They're out and about just as much as the, the patrol deputies are and taking an equal amount of caseload as well.
Are you saying the, the, your staff works twelve-hour days?
Twelve-hour shifts is what they do, yes.
Wow.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one that's not related to the budget, so if anybody has budget questions. I have a captive audience. So, the ACES Summit was last Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
And so one of the big things they talked about was connection, and Cory, I already emailed you on this. So, can you give me examples? It's, and it's not connection versus Zoom. It's face-to-face connection. So, can you tell me how you're implementing that in the jail?
As far as the face-to-face with part of our email?
Yeah, the.
What we email?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Well, ACES is a, is a great, you know, a, a foundation for how things work, but it doesn't mean that we can implement that in a jail-type of setting. You know, you have to understand, um, you know, when a deputy responds to somebody's house, that's far different than being in a secure area of the jail. Um, the jail, the ministry program, we are, um, going to go back to in-person.
Good.
Stuff as far as that goes. Um, but, you know, we still have other, um, people, you know, where the inmates used to meet face-to-face with, you know, a couple of years ago, that we're not going. We've, that we're not gonna go back to face-to-face with.
So, does that include the probation officers and the, um, attorneys?
Yes. We have a room for them to meet through the glass, um, that is, there's a new window getting installed, you know, for that purpose.
So, then they'll, they'll still be meeting with, with just with a glass partition between them?
Yep, yep. Yep, and that is saving so much. I mean, you, you can't imagine the staff time, you know, as far as letting an attorney in, having to let him through to get the inmate, you know, all that. It's just time-consuming. Where the way we're gonna do it is they can come in on their own, they go right into the room, this is adjacent off the lobby. You know, they're, they have a, a counter here, they'll have the, you know, a speaker system. They'll have the slide-through so they can slide through their documents that they need the person to read or to sign, or, or whatever it may be. The probation officers will be the same thing.
Okay, and that's way different than Zooming?
Oh, totally. I, I totally agree.
We're all sick of Zoom.
Yes. Yeah, so this is in-person, you know, it's just that you can't.
Okay.
Um, you know, you, you're not sitting right next to them, you're sitting across from them. It's the same thing. But the ministers, the ministry program, what we're doing, um, in the programming part of our jail is we'll, we will be going back to in-person possibly this week. I mean, it's, it's, it's in motion. I spoke to our head chaplain on that, and, um, we are going back to that.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
No, the administrator. So, I'm gonna get those notes from Scott and summarize them and talk about the level of service, uh, dispatch, jailer, deputies, administration, and provide some additional detail relative to the, um, to the staffing. I'll try to break that number down for you to show you what is changed from our preliminary, or our, our final twenty-two budget to what our proposed twenty-three is, so you can see where the dollars are coming from, changes, and where they're coming from, costs going up. Um, and also, um, hopefully before next week's work session, I'll provide that analysis of the FTE, um, by department and show you what's happened over a period of five years and where, where it's growing and where it's not growing. Um, I think, I think we all know that it's, it's public safety and social services is where we've, we've seen increases. But I want you to actually have that data and be able to see that.
What might be beneficial, uh, Jeff, for the fellow commissioners is, um, you know, he's saying eighty percent. Did he say, did he stop being able to take in, uh, or outsource or bring in inmates? But what has that looked like in the last ten years? In the last ten years, how many people were our residents? And then how many people did we actually come in?
That would be helpful. They have a good idea.
They, they, you know.
So, I, I toured the jail facility, uh, with Joe and, and Cory last week and, um, talked about the increased capacity creating challenges relative to intake, which I think we've all anecdotally heard that conversation. Um, and, and I asked Joe to be putting some numbers together for me, um, relative to the last five years' history of average daily population, our, our inmates versus those that we're hosting. Um, I don't, the five years previous to that are gonna be relatively the same. The change is gonna show in the last, in the last five years, but we can go back further if you want. But I should be getting that information quickly. That, we're gathering that information to have some idea as to the possibility of the scope of some changes in intake in remodeling over there to make things work better. There are also challenges we have, uh, with the number of big blocks of pods that we have over there. We don't have the configure, configurability we need to operate at the higher levels on a regular basis. Um, so we're, we're working in the background to figure out what that looks like and to kinda put a scope to that. But we will have that, the information relative to how that's changed. But if you, if you go back, um, if you look at page. So, on page forty-three on the front page of.
Forty-three, you said?
Forty-three.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-one actual, under Board of Prisoners, we had three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars worth of actual revenue. Twenty-twenty-two, we budgeted for three hundred and forty-five thousand. We're gonna come way short of that.
Wait a minute.
Um, about seven lines down on page forty-three.
Oh, right here, okay.
So, you can see the big difference is we're budgeting for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue instead of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of revenue. That's two hundred thousand less. We're not gonna make a hundred and fifty if we're fully staff, or fully occupied with our prisoners in there. So, even that number is, probably needs to be adjusted. And, and then the other big number is about five lines down from that, where you can see our actual wages in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, we're one point six eight. Our twenty-twenty-one budget was one-five-nine-eight, so you see we overspent by ninety thousand dollars that year. Um, we budgeted one-six-seven-one in twenty-two, and we're showing eighteen-fifty-eight in twenty-three. And that change, um, from twenty-two to twenty-three is the addition of those four, um, four additional jail staff and the wages for that. And we're showing additional, um, part-time wages in the jail too, just to cover. So, if you look at your end-of-July, um, financials, I saw four hundred thousand dollars of overages in expenses in the two hundred accounts and over a hundred thousand dollars shortfall in revenues, wages, and then, um, outsourcing or boarding of prisoners. And if you take that times, we were at fifty-eight percent of the year, so we got forty percent of that more to go. We're probably another three, four hundred thousand dollars deficit. So, this, um, million-dollar increase, and I'll, I'll put this one back up, is just catching up with our actual use for this year. And in this one, which is the, what's different in this one than the one you just saw, is I made the adjustment in the expenditure to delete that ninety-two thousand dollars in part-time expenses. So, the, um, levy increase is not one point one million, it's one point oh-one million. It's a s- six and three-quarter percent increase off our current sixteen million dollar levy to carry that.
So, help me out. I wasn't at the last meeting, so he's saying that he wants this other, um, sergeant because he's giving him three part-time?
No, he wants the other sergeant to have, um, have supervise, have a, a daytime supervisor.
So, now we have, we have three now, and you wanna add four? So, then my question to you is, what does the, um, sheriff and undersheriff, are they not a supervisor?
Honestly, I'm not, I'm not gonna answer. They were just here.
Yeah, no, I understand that. But I'm throwing that out there because I missed that meeting and I thought maybe some of these questions would be super.
We did not talk about that. We didn't talk about the jail budget because they, the sheriff wasn't here. That, today was the opportunity to have that first conversation.
No problem.
You can see that some of the assumptions that we made in general mean that we're actually getting by with less levy this year for the rest of general operations next year. Offset by the highway, percent and a half down for general, percent and a quarter up for highway.
Which we haven't raised in.
At least four years.
Yeah, I was gonna say at least, since I'm on the board.
So, their two hundred thousand dollar increase is just relative to the, the cost of maintenance. Most of the projects are still funded by state, federal, or, or gas tax money, um, or our local transportation sales tax. But this is just the cost of stuff, um, blades and, and, uh, equipment for the snow blowing.
If we took out social services because we haven't budgeted correctly, or we haven't balanced our budget in years before, it's only public safety that is a large dollar amount for the levy.
And I can account for almost ninety, almost a hundred percent of the public safety change just in the jail operations and the additional cost of that, and then the cost of labor in twenty-three versus twenty-two.
Yep.
So, again, like, any conversation about modifying that would have to go back to public safety measures. You know, if we've currently got three deputies on overnight, do we get by with two? Do we deal with response time issues? Um, that's the conversation that would have to be had. Or Commissioner Stacy's questions about administrative responsibilities. Those would be fair questions for, for the sheriff, but and I truthfully believe that we will look at most of these again between setting the preliminary levy. and I truthfully believe that we will look at most of these again between setting the preliminary levy and the final levy. Um, that we'd at least see public safety and social services again in that, in that meantime. I don't know that there were really any unresolved issues. Um, we're gonna see solid waste and highway department next week, so we should be able to get through those two. They're pretty, pretty much calculations as well and they're not asking for much. Here you can see again the list of, of changes that have been made. They haven't been made, they will be made. Before you vote on the preliminary levy, we'll make those adjustments so that you can see the final page that shows what the preliminary request is. But as I mentioned to some of you, I don't remember when, um, we will have tax impact, um, calculations so that you can see what the net impact of this is on the county tax. Preliminary estimates show that, um, capturing that em ridge amount is not gonna cost our residential taxpayers anything. As a matter of fact, it's gonna offset. My preliminary calculation shows our tax rate going from thirty-nine to thirty and a half percent. So that the tax increase, the county tax increase on a property is gonna be in the modest, somewhere around three and a half to five percent.
And next year, am I correct, we might be able to capture something else with Enbridge because of the oil flowing through the pipe?
As I understand, we will, we will have a secondary bump, uh, relative to the value, the cash value of those lines, not just the, the physical construction value of those lines. But I can't get anybody to give me an idea what those numbers are.
I'm sure they won't be, they'll be modest compared to this year's numbers.
They will be modest compared to this year's numbers. We're capturing tax capacity on two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars of infrastructure. And our typical, our residential construction this year was thirty-eight million.
Oh.
So it's, um, eight or ten times, eight or nine times the regular value.
Thank you.
So that would be all I would have for administrator comments, um, other than what we talked about sheriff's office. Um, you can't have much of a conversation on the, on the overall scope of this until we have those tax impacts calculated.
I think like, like Shar said, it was informative to hear Cory and Scott explain things this morning. Is there anything else? Otherwise we'll move on to committee reports. Let's start with Tom.
Well, I've, I've been on vacation the last couple of weeks, so I've missed the committee meetings. I really don't have anything.
So that was easy.
Yeah, yeah. That's the first time I didn't have anything that I can recall.
Sure.
Okay, I will start with prime net, prime west. Uh, the Gillette, in July, net gain was four million nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, for a total year to date gain of nineteen million five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And like I mentioned when we were talking with Cory and Scott, um, we're assuming that the state's gonna adjust the rates. Part of the reason, um, people, medical expenses are still down compared to what they were pre-COVID. So we'll see what happens there. Due to remote work, the main floor of Prime West will be rented out and all offices will be moved. Prime West offices will be moved to the second floor. Bids for minor remodeling was approved. Only five percent of the Prime West workforce comes to the office every day. Otherwise they do hybrid and then some work remotely full-time. Interestingly enough, um, just a sidebar, um, they're predicting that the trend within the next five years will be companies are gonna require workers to come back to the office. Cause they're seeing a disconnect, so. Um, enrollment was down a hundred and fifty-three members and, um, at this time, you know, the state government is doing nothing to, cause we already know the enrollment's up. It's not accurate. So Prime West is guessing that people that, um, became employed went on the site and actually took themselves off. Hubbard County has five thousand six hundred thirty-two members. Two hundred and seventy-seven of those are seniors, two thousand six hundred forty-nine are adult and two thousand seven hundred six are children ages zero to two. Um, do you wanna talk about ACES?
No, I don't.
Okay. Connection was the theme. And, um, the keynote speaker was a judge that retired from Duluth. He was, he's a very much a proponent for a drug court. And he spoke on, um, we need to be healthy ourselves, um, physically and emotionally to have good, healthy connection with others. And then, um, one thing he mentioned was, um, our brains are not made to take in all the information. Our phones offer us in the day. And that's why so many of us are going, "Hey." And he said the, um, the average person looks at their cellphone every four minutes. Um.
Low average.
If you had an iPhone, it'd track you.
Yes, it does.
But.
Um, Mahavi, um, we had an indigenous speaker. His name was Wayne Somas and he works with Mahavi and, um, the, he's actually conducting a language class. Um, he's, his descendants for, are from the Ojibwe tribe and so he too is learning the language and so Liz is participating in the class. So that gave demonstration of that. And then I saved heritage for the last. So the twenty-twenty-three budget for heritage, the manors, um, budgeted to have a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in net income, which will take their occupancy from the current fifteen to twenty-three. Heritage Living Center, last year when they budgeted, they budgeted for their beds, you know, getting fuller. This year they did their budget flat. So they, so they'll still be at thirty-four beds. The salary increase will be five percent. They increased dining ten percent just because of inflation. And then Ekumans two point five percent management increase, which is five hundred and eighty-seven dollars per month. So looking at their budget, which was done very conservatively, they're estimating a loss of seven hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars next year. So, um, we had discussion.
Should make a comment on that?
Yes.
The loss includes depreciation and amortization. Um, if you just talk about the operating budget, they show about a one percent return.
Okay, good point. Thank you.
So it, if they pay the debt service and the operating expenses, they just cash flow by about one percent. Um, the, the seven hundred and forty-five is, is correct, but it does include depreciation, which is a liability and not actual dollars.
Thank you for doing that or for saying that. Um, so this week, Kurt emailed out Leading Edge, which is the statewide report. So I'm just gonna give you a couple informational pieces. Greater Minnesota's operating average is at a minus four point nine percent. Ten percent of all Min- uh, Minnesota nursing homes have exhausted all their cash and borrowing options. Twenty percent are one month behind at, with at least one vendor. Thirty percent are considering a sale and ten percent are considering closing. So, um, the result would be thirty closures in the state of Minnesota. And key workforce issues are greater in facilities considering a sale and or closing. So Dave led the discussion. We had a very blunt discussion at the heritage board meeting. This board is gonna have to make some serious decisions this next year. And so, um, we're gonna start meeting as an executive board to see what we can do to help facilitate the heritage to move forward in a positive manner. One of the things, um, we're considering is doing need to hire, um, a firm that would come in and an advertising firm that that actually is what they do. And rebrand and tell the story and try get workers and I, I don't know. Dave, uh, um, Dick Devine, who was a commissioner here for many years in my district and was instrumental in, um, getting the heritage remodel, felt that these decisions should come from the board of commissioners of what we do instead of the heritage board. Because he feels it should be an elective position because of the seriousness of the decisions that have to be made versus people that were just asked to be on the heritage board. So I, I just pass that on to you as a comment.
It's, it's not gonna be easy and it's, as you just mentioned too, we're not the only nursing home that's having issues.
We are not.
So it's, it's statewide and I'm sure it's countrywide.
So one of the things we're gonna look at and, and Jeff's gonna help us with this is the, uh, if we're gonna, if heritage is gonna move forward operating as it currently is, what if anything can we ask for the residents, the taxpayers to pay? And you guys already know, I, I don't feel the taxpayer should have to subsidize this to keep it open.
Yeah, in other words levy for the nursing home.
Right. And, and that gets into a whole, that just gets messy to me because then no matter how, what happens, we already know that the bills are gonna be paid anyway. I, I just don't think government belongs in healthcare.
Maybe the public wants to keep the nursing home.
If the public wants to keep the nursing home, then I would ask that they start calling the commissioners cause I've only received one phone call in this entire time asking to keep it open. So I, the public really needs to weigh in on this.
I agree.
Yep.
Was this about the awkward scene going from fifteen to twenty-three? Can you maybe explain that?
Oh, that's the manor. So that's assisted living and assisted living actually in the state of Minnesota, eh, eh, that the nursing home is different for occupancy as far as having trouble filling that. Assisted living has a much better chance of filling. And so, um, heritage has started using, um, staff that can go between the manor and the nursing home as a way to fulfill adequate staff to house for assisted living.
Yeah, are there any ways in which you can increase that? Any use, have other use for it or?
We'd have to go through the state of Minnesota and then, um, you'd have to put beds away and then request it to be changed to assisted living. You can't just decide.
Is that something that you and Dave and.
The executive committee?
Are working on now? I mean, that's something you wanna at least have a conversation.
Everything is on the table, Dan.
But is anybody doing anything about that now? Are they looking into that now? That's what I figured.
The conversations came up at those meetings and the determination was not to do anything, to leave the greatest possible flexibility. If you set aside beds, you set them aside for twelve months. If the property is listed, that would probably hamper anybody's interest in the property. So the conversation was had and determined not to move while it was, um, listed.
And it's listed, but we have nothing.
Not yet.
Right. So I'm just wondering.
I passed a name on to Jeff that someone from a different county gave me, so I, I don't know. Yeah. I, I mean, if you look at this, thirty percent of the nursing homes in the state of Minnesota are considering a sale.
So will those thirty percent then consider assisted living, which is?
Who knows? Uh, who knows?
You know, I mean, it's a great opportunity for, uh, new people, new vendors and things of that nature, but I'm just posing, you know, to you.
Yeah.
And in my last, well, not the last question, but did you ever get a hold of that contact individual? We spoke about?
I'm working on it. I have not forgotten. It will be done before the executive committee meeting.
So you should read the paper.
I did read the paper.
Yes. Okay.
That's, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Dan?
Hi.
Any committee reports?
Shar already talked about Summit and it was a success. We had, um, I don't know, almost three hundred people there. And I believe that Angie's gonna come in or would like to come in and maybe first work with Jeff and address the different things and, and, um, and where we're at. So the only thing I have, uh, that I want you to think about maybe for this budget process is that, um, as a commissioner for every term served, uh, at least the old term, I think we, I think I let that go for the new people, right? For every, uh, year served or term served, you get a year of insurance, correct? So, uh, and statistically in the past, not the future, uh, or present, the commissioners were of retirement age. So then they bypassed their insurance and went to, whenever you guys go to Medicare, Medicaid, I'm not sure what it is, but anyhow. And so I want you to think about that. Is there any way of, um, cause we have, you know, younger commissioners and I'm sure we're going to get more, is to bypass and hold that and or book that benefit as being the county commissioner for a later date? In other words, okay, so if Shar, uh, retires two years from now and doesn't need the, the coverage, but maybe in two years after she retires, she may. Is she still able to receive that, uh, benefit when she's signed as a commissioner?
That sounds like an "and" question.
That sounds like.
A legal question.
You know, we probably should look into that. Because there's been numerous, I mean, since my.
It, it's, it's an accumulated liability against the county in favor of the elected official. When it can, the fact that it can be used is not disputed. When it can be used is a question.
That's the question. When can it be used?
That's the question. You're right. But it's a liability. Right now, the county owes two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in accumulated elected officials' benefits.
What does that with just the current, did that?
That's all. That's the, that's the entire liability for elected officials. Accumulated benefits right now is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, but it's going up and we have not changed it for anybody that's newly elected. They're still accumulating at that rate. That policy has not changed, as I understand it.
So help me out, cause I didn't catch it. That two hundred and some odd thousand dollars is that? The individuals that had retired and didn't use it, that's still on the books?
That's the, that's the unspent liability. That's the liability accrued by the county that has not been paid out.
So for instance, let, let's say that I had been on the board for sixteen years. So I, I would currently, I would currently be using one of them, but I would have three years of the, that the county has to put on the books. Three years worth of insurance they still have to cover me for. So that's part of that. That would be part of that two hundred and thirty thousand.
We're paying against past elected officials. Um, we're holding liability for current elected officials. Um, yeah, I.
Why are we holding past to past?
We're not holding, we're paying. We haven't paid out everybody who has retired from elected service to the county yet.
Cause they have more than one year of insurance.
Cause they haven't needed it?
We haven't paid it out yet.
He's talking about, he's talking about.
I can, I can only give you the information we have. We have two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of unpaid liability for elected officials' insurance.
For insurance premiums.
And we have not changed the policy. If somebody knew were to be elected, they would be brought in under the same policy.
Okay. It's something to look into.
Go for it.
Is that a "and" question?
No.
I wouldn't think it would be a "and" question. That's our, that's us.
No.
No?
It is each of the individual elected officials who have a liability, have money coming.
I, no, I, Jeff, I believe, I believe Dan is saying, is it an "and" question? If I retired, but I didn't wanna take my insurance benefit provided by the county for two years?
No, it's not an "and" question.
That's not an "and" question either?
It's still on the books. It's earned. It's there. You use it when you need it.
But I'm wondering if there's a regulation, there's a statute for all kinds of stuff.
There is a statute for all kinds of stuff, but it's, until it's spent, it's a liability against the county.
Yeah, I, I understand that part.
And it certainly can only be used in certain ways, but when it's used is not necessarily regulated as much as how it's used.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
So is that a known about way that says that it can be used at later time when needed before you expire from this earth?
Yes. Under certain conditions.
What conditions are those? What conditions are they?
I, all I can tell you, the two things that I'll tell you is we have two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of outstanding liability for elected officials' health insurance. And we are one of, one county that's still offer that benefit.
No, I realize that. So could you get, could you enlighten the board?
Not right now, not without research.
No, I realize that.
Okay.
Could you research, enlighten the board? If, if what you just said to the rest of the board members is, is, um, to the best of your knowledge.
Don't know what you just asked.
I was trying to say politically correct. So what you're saying is factual information that you can use it later on. Without whatever except. What did you add? You put expectations or add?
Parameters.
Parameters on it.
I would have to double check that. What I can tell you is we're carrying two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for the liability.
No, I got it. I, I know where you're trying to.
And accruing, and accruing more every year.
Right, now I realize that. But if you could look into that, that'd be great. Do my fellow commissioners agree?
If you, if you want to know when you can spend it, you can sit down and talk with Gina individually. It's benefits administration. But that honestly, you can talk to Gina and she can tell you when and how you can spend it.
Actually, let's have Gina come and talk to us about that.
No, you'd rather do it individually than have it at an open meeting, absolutely. I could not, we could not put together a presentation that includes all ifs, ands, thens, therefore statements. You would have to talk to them about benefits administration and your use of that, the same as anybody else would as retiring in doing the planning for using those benefits. So it is just a benefits administration question, best handled by you talking directly to our benefits administrators.
Okay. All right. Public safety, we had a meeting on Friday, I believe last, oh, Friday before, uh, with, with, um, Jed and David, and we discussed a few different topics regarding, uh, of course, uh, ATVs and usage and right of ways. And I believe that the thought process at the time was to contact, um, our local DNR from Bemidji, correct? I think it was, yeah, out of Bemidji. And, um, see where we can go as far as liability, as far as are they going to increase, um, the, um, trail groups compensation so that they can address the, um, maybe destruction to the driveways, roadways, things of that nature. And, uh, we talked about snow plowing in, uh, specific townships. And it looks like maybe there'll be, um, some positive outcome with that for those of you that are at the township's, township meeting.
Okay, so they're going to find something, okay, good.
Yes, I think there's something else and I'm trying to think if there's another topic of that.
Those are the major ones. Those were the major ones.
Yeah, that's the major ones. That's all I have, um, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just had a couple. Had, um, the headwaters, Mississippi headwaters, one watershed, one plan. We're starting the implementation. I thought I had the, the number here, but as I recall, it's like eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars we got from the state to start to implement our plans. We had some carryover from our planning grant, um, in which they did a feasibility study on, um, stormwater, see if I can get the correct pronunciation, correct wording here. Stormwater retrofit analysis and feasibility. So there'll be some work being done in the city of Bemidji, uh, Deer River and Cohasset, I believe it is. As we all know, that's just five counties, Beltrami, Cass, Clearwater, Hubbard and Itasca. So we're basically covering from the headwaters to the city of Grand Rapids. Like I said, some of that, they, they did a, a study to see where the need is. And that's where Bemidji had several areas that were in need. They hit the, the, they're going to do the most highest rated ones. Trying to find here, okay, yeah, the priority rankings and stuff like that. They do the costs, uh, benefit analysis. So it'll be Bemidji, Cass Lake and Deer River that'll be getting some of the grant money. And that's just for part of it. There's also going to be, like in Hubbard County, currently there's, uh, money's available for like the, the no-till drill. We bought into one of those. There's been quite a bit of use of it, uh, even some here in, in Hubbard County. I asked if even I myself could use it. I don't do a lot of farming, but I am in the, um, watershed and also one of my fields is on a lakeshore. So I am eligible to use the no-till drill, which will help with erosion, which of course helps with water quality and stuff like that. And, um, so as the, um, policy board, we're basically going to meet twice a year now. The next time we're going to meet is February because by then we'll have more of the numbers from twenty twenty-two available. So we'll be able to see where we're going. And like with all of this, um, we have goals and then we have measurable, uh, things so we can measure to see how we're getting there. Also during this meeting, we did talk briefly about the, um, Crow Wing watershed. They're getting their planning grant and that's getting going. So I know, I told them, I know that there was a couple of, three commissioners on my board that were excited about that process starting. And the other thing I had was a managers' meeting. Talked a little bit about budget and contract negotiations. HR, uh, we talked a little bit about the classifications from thirty-two to twenty-two. And, uh, Medica Insurance, their lower rates. Environmental Services, said it was a typical summer. Working on new permitting software, uh, short-term rentals was going better than other counties that had just started their, uh, short-term rental programs or ordinances. There again, uh, then the attorney, Jonathan, said the same thing, he said, a typical summer. He did talk about, uh, a new THC ordinance. He had, uh, was talking mostly about how the state really didn't have any, have much for, for, uh.
Loopholes.
Yeah, um, so the, loopholes, thank you, Dan. But, uh, so they're talking about, um, um, maybe, basically just, um, who can sell it? There isn't even, that isn't even covered by the state. And there was some discussion about doing nothing because hopefully the state will take that up first thing when they do start the legislative, legislative session in January. IT, uh, state and ARVIG are upgrading our connection. They talked about black and white copies versus color, how color is ten times more than black and white. And, uh, Rob even made the comment, if you print something that's black and white, but there's one line like you see here where the, it's blue highlighted to, for a hyperlink or whatever, that that thing gets counted as a colored copy. So we're looking at ways to change that. There again, recorder's office business as usual, working with Rob, uh, for backup on some of their systems. Let's see, Department of, Assessor, Department of Revenue, yearly review, uh, okay. Everything was okay there, solid waste. They talked about the fire at the South Transfer Station. And they're also about looking for a regional demolition landfill and how there's nine counties working together that have applied for a grant so that they can do some more research on that. Highway, Jed mentioned today about, uh, starting the one nineteen project. And, uh, there'll be some work done in Nevis on that also. Maintenance, uh, talked about the new cameras. We're up and running. And no, and there was, I guess there was an outage and the, so the backup generator kicked in and that there was no problems with the backup generator. VSO outreach program. Talked a bit, a little bit about that and the veterans' home in Duluth is busy. He's going to be out of the office September eleventh through the fourteenth. And he's going to have coffee with the vets on the twentieth. Sheriff's Department said nothing new. Auditor Treasurer, busy, was busy proofing ballots. And she has fifty-nine different ballots in Hubbard County to, to review and make sure that they're correct. And that's all I have. August is definitely a slow month for me. And let's see, otherwise we have here meetings to note, the Course to Work Session, looks like Road and Bridge, Solid Waste, Library, SWCD and Lake Beltane. I don't know if anybody has anything to add. Brady?
Mr. Chair, um, we received, I'm assuming all of us did, an email today, registration is open for the AMC Annual Conference. So I would like to ask Jeff and Denise if you would register. I plan to go.
I also plan to go.
I plan to go.
And Dan looks like he's undecided.
No, Dan had a, uh, was given, no, I better not say that.
This is in December.
Yeah, December fifth through seventh.
Oh, December fifth? Again, I didn't, I didn't.
So it's Sunday through Tuesday.
So Denise will follow up, she's got a copy of that invitation as well.
The fifth through the seventh of December. Yeah, I know.
That's the problem. See, where's that going to be again?
Home of your board chair. Childhood home of your board chair.
Oh, then I was your neighbor then.
Oh, yeah? So if there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Dan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shar. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.